Okay, I think we'll go ahead and call meeting to order. We'll start with the roll call.
Galesburg?
Here.
Goodman?
Here.
Hervison?
Here.
Perd?
Here.
Cots?
Here.
Mattoon?
Raff?
Here. So we're good with quorum and do a pledge allegiance.
Well done.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, certified open meeting, all requirements have been met.
The notice of the meeting and the agenda was posted in the three public places and the newspapers were notified.
Okay. Now adopt agenda, just looking for a motion and second on the agenda if you guys are okay with that.
Make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion is second, board has a motion, any comments or questions? All in favor of adopt agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, nay? All right, nice having. Recognition of visitors, citizen input and correspondence, I guess is what that is. So if anybody from the citizen floor or on the, wanna say anything, it's your time to do that. I will ask, can you guys hear us okay? Is it better, has it been better here than maybe over there? If anybody recalls, no? You can hear us okay though? Okay. Thank you. Okay, moving on then, approval of minutes.
I had one correction in the Public Works, Public Safety and Public, or Property Committee meeting. The suggestion for the trail camera was actually from our administrator, Jared McKee. That was a brainstorm. That would be the only change that I saw in the minutes.
Okay, so if somebody makes a motion and you wanna have that amendment included, just.
I make a motion to have that amended, that amendment put into the meeting minutes.
But are you making a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment? Is that what your motion is?
I make a motion to approve the minutes with that amendment.
Okay. Was there, did you second?
That was the only one. Oh, I see, you want to second, yes, second, I second, sure.
Motion is second, board has a motion to approve the minutes with the one noted amendment to the Public Works, Public Safety and Property Committee meeting. Anything else with that minutes at all? All right, all in favor of approving the minutes with that one modification, say aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, nay? All right, ayes have it as well. Right, and financial report.
There's not a lot to point out on this one, you see there wasn't a lot of yellow. I'm just gonna call your attention to a few items that, because we're at the seventy-five percent of the year, that we're done with three quarters. I do wanna show that we have a new account in there, police special revenue, that's for grants and donations. We used to have a fund for that and it has now been moved into the general fund. So that is moving the entire amount that we have received so far this year into general fund. And then you'll see a corresponding expense on page three. That is account number five-two-one-ninety-zero-zero-zero-six-hundred. And that is the expense that has been for the entire year for that account. And then the other items, I'm just gonna call your attention, we've talked about it before, but because we're at the seventy-five percent, I'm just calling your attention to two accounts that are over, the police department admin alternating expense. And that is account number fifty-two-one-sixty-zero-zero-zero-seven-ninety, it is on page three. And that is because of buying computers and it will be reimbursed by a grant. So that might be moved down to the expense from special revenue to make that more clear. And then on the fourth page, the park alternating periodic expense, account number fifty-five-two-hundred-zero-zero-zero-seven-ninety. And you'll see that that is very high as well. And that was for the outdoor rec plan and then the trees for Keller Park. But otherwise, when you look at most of the other categories, we look at them by the bold categories, not each individual account, you can see that most are falling within the seventy-five percent. Nothing's looking too alarming as of right now. Are there any questions?
By nothing's looking too alarming, can I, I hope you say that we're close to budget on almost all of our categories. We're either under or close to in our big picture, not. Too alarming means a lot of different things to a lot of different people.
You have better words, those are better words.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Make a motion to accept the finances.
Second.
Motion and second to accept the budget comparison financial report. Anybody have any comments or questions for Renee or Jared on that? All right, do a roll call vote.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Perd?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Galesburg?
Yes.
Okay, on to the bills.
I did email you this afternoon telling you that I did add in some last minute bills. They are towards the bottom of the first page, starting at check number two-six-seven-two-six, going to check number two-six-seven-two-nine. And then as far as the invoices that I wanted to call your attention to, you will see the heirs and associates, we had two invoices that was for the Brickyard Street Utility Extension Project. And then you will see Brian Rock is part of the ball field. You will be having a contractor's draw request happening later on in the meeting. Clifton Larson Allen, one of the things with having the water rate increase, when the PSC was looking at our annual report, they decided they wanted to have certain things recorded differently than what it had been. So they required that the 2021 annual report was resubmitted with those corrections. Clifton Larson Allen are the ones that did the report to begin with, but Jared spoke about this when he was going through the different items that, with the PSC application, there was nothing exactly wrong with how they entered it, but the PSC wanted it in a different account. Did I explain that correctly, Jared?
Mostly, there were a couple of small things that were legitimately wrong. For instance, there were some wrong meter counts that were very small things, easy fixes. There was a few other things that were within general accounting principles, but not the way the PSC wanted to see it. So they weren't in error, it wasn't something we could say you did it wrong, you didn't do a good job, you need to do it at your cost, they were within accepted accounting principles. So if we needed to change it for the PSC, because they don't actually fill out the PSC report. They prepare a draft, but it's actually staff that submits, if they can't submit it for us, that's actually being submitted in our names.
Right.
So honestly, they did quite a lot of work for us in that process. It's just not a lot much money to get paid a thousand dollars for it.
Okay.
It is a legitimate bill, what they did legitimately do to ours and it wasn't something that was a mistake from something they had previously done for them all. I mean, there was a couple of very small things, but that wouldn't have, meter counts would've been a very quick thing to update.
Then I'll just proceed on the EO Johnson, we did have the repairman in two times. It was the side, the second drawer, the roller, and then also the thing that was allowing the toner to go in. We haven't had a lot of repairs to that machine, but I'm just calling your attention to it because it is something that we don't have all of the time. Then you'll see the bill for Farner Asphalt for the crack fill and the GSB eighty-eight. And you'll see the quarterly bill for the fire district. And you'll see four bills for Fox Brothers Construction, that's for the ball field. Again, you're gonna be addressing that when you get to the pay request for the Keller Park ball field. And then you will see the Public Service Commission. This is the second bill that we've had from them for the rate increase. And Spectrum Insurance, we paid the quarterly commercial and workers' comp insurance. The next highlighted account is the Wisconsin Department of Administration Environmental Improvement Fund. That is our debt service payment for well number one and well three and four. We have two payments a year, this is our second payment this year. Bartow Builders, that is again for the Keller Park ball field. And then on the last page, the only highlighted account is the Depository Trust Company. And that is our payment on Ellers, the refinancing loan. Everything else was just the standard monthly expenses, invoices. Are there any questions?
I have a question, I guess on the, on the Ellers, does that change, is that a fixed price per, every year that we pay with that when they file?
No, that's not for them filing, that's the loan payment.
That's the loan payment?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought there was like an annual thing where they.
Uh, there is, it's seven fifty? Yeah, I can remember seven hundred or seven fifty that is included, but the, that's the payment.
Yeah, it's to the Depository Trust Company and I just code it that way so we remember it's the Ellers refinancing.
It's not two Ellers, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Did anything come on the itemized list on the ball field?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Not, not make contact.
Any other questions on the bills? Now we're just looking for a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, board has a motion to pay the bills, as you seen here. Any other comments, questions? All right, do a roll call vote.
Hervison?
Yes.
Perd?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Galesburg?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, Village Administrator Report.
Okay, I'll try and go over this fairly quickly. One of the big things we've worked on through this month has been budget, obviously. We have a requirement to submit to this group, the administrator with the, of the Personnel and Finance Committee is to submit to this group by October twentieth, the balanced budget. We, we did meet, we, several times on that, we have a prepared budget, it's a little bit further down obviously on the agenda, but we are preparing, are proposing a balanced budget. There are a few small changes from when we met in committee that we'll go over a little bit later, but once again, we got a little less revenue than we expected in another category. You'll notice this down, we did our employee reviews. And we did get Brickyard Adams and Jackson all got their seal coat. And you guys all noticed the parking lot out there, we did get our wedge patching. As you guys remember, that's not a long-term solution, it's not gonna fix the parking lot like a rebuild would. But it was significantly cheaper, you know, we're talking twelve thousand dollars as opposed to a hundred thousand dollars. So, you know, I hear people complain, oh, you know, why don't we just do the whole parking lot while we were at it, or, you know. But, you know, obviously we're in a much better situation there today than we were.
You get rid of the big holes.
Yeah, and honestly, it's significantly better than, yeah.
Yeah.
And when I talked to him, he said it should last eight years.
Yeah, and like say, and, you know, wedge patching, they all tend to say three to five, you know, for three to five or eight, wherever we're at, we've got significantly more life on it than what we had. And it's a functional parking lot as opposed to, I think they call it the Gaza Strip, so. You'll notice, I mean, you can read the treasurer's report in the library, you'll notice the police department, we are seeing higher case numbers. One of the things the police department has really focused on has been enforcement in traffic. We've got a couple of people that have been complaining fairly heavily that we're not, that we're not running enough traffic enforcement, that, you know, people are flowing through crosswalks, they're speeding all over town. We are, we are actively looking for it, we're actively trying to address those citizens' concerns. Unfortunately, we're not necessarily seeing it where the complaints are happening. We have started logging that, trying to demonstrate the number of hours we're spending in those areas and those communities and what, what violations we're seeing, and we're just not seeing it. But we are, we have increased some of our dedication to that, trying to, trying to see where that. If you'll notice, there's traffic stops with enforcement is an enhanced category, we're showing this last month. I'm not sure if that's a good or a bad thing, depending on your opinion of where we are at, but we are, we have received a decent number of citizen comments on that and concerns, so that is something we are, we are looking at and trying to address seriously. Another thing you'll notice is the police department is looking at some body cams. We do not currently require our police department to run or wear body cams. There's some grant money that the police department did receive through the governor's office in his slushy fund that could be used for that, and Colin is looking into that and what the implications of that would be. And then in Public Works Report, obviously we've got our normal things, but you will see at the bottom of it, we did give a summary of our wheat harvesting for where we are at for the year. Hundred and fifty yards of material was removed. And kind of a breakdown of the number of hours that we've estimated the Public Works has spent on it over the course of the year. And that is my report.
Okay, thanks Jared, any questions for Administrator Jared? Yeah, the Adams, Jackson, Brickyard, all done, nothing next year, right?
No, nothing next year, almost.
Anything else? All right, thanks again Jared. Eleven is committee reports, again, hopefully you've seen the, in the minutes. Kinda covers a lot of what's, what's been going on. Anything specific, Sheena, you would wanna add there?
No, I think the minutes pretty much summed it up, just having a discussion about, or we had a discussion about cameras in the park, looked at the cost and now since we're heading into fall, things are changing a little bit, so we are going to revisit that again if need be in the spring.
Okay, thanks. Yep, finance personnel, economic development, heavy on the budget stuff, so you'll see that coming up. Ryan's been kinda tasked with doing the broadband with Dean Miski and Karen and whoever else on that, so he's gonna lead that up. It's kind of the big updates from that, that committee. So, nothing else, move on to unfinished business, so we have a couple of second readings here. We'll start with the second reading and possible adoption of amendments to the zoning ordinances to repeal Chapter two sixty-eight zoning and amend and recreate it as Title sixteen zoning. So you saw in the minutes before, we talked about in the last meeting, how it's went through the planning commission. And there's been certain elements that have been through the sort of subcommittee that we did for the downtown district, but it's been through a number, a number of meetings and we had this here last board meeting too. I don't think there, was there any updates to this?
One really important one on the agenda last month. We called it Title seventeen.
Title seventeen.
It's Title sixteen, it was sixteen in the document we sent out, it was sixteen. So re-titling the title.
Just the number was.
Just the number, yep.
Yeah.
Really important one that a good citizen pointed out to me, that we published it wrong, but.
Okay.
So we updated the title number, but no, there's not, there's a couple of.
So this would be the second reading and final reading for that and it'll be adopted after that.
I make a motion that we approve the second reading and possible, and the adoption of amendments to the zoning ordinances to repeal Chapter two sixty-eight zoning and to amend and recreate it as Chapter sixteen zoning.
Title sixteen.
Title sixteen, yes. My second.
Okay, motion is second, board has a motion, any additions, comments, corrections? Anything with that? Do not do a roll call vote, please.
Perd?
Yes.
Cots?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Galesburg?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yeah.
Hervison?
Yes.
Okay, on to second reading and possible adoption of amendments to ordinances related to health and sanitation to repeal Chapter one twenty-five, outdoor burning, one forty-eight, health and sanitation, one sixty-eight junk dealers, one eighty-four nuisances, two twenty-three garbage and recycling, two thirty-eight trees, two fifty-six weeds, yards and lawns, and amend, combine them, I guess, and recreate them as Title seven, health and sanitation. This is part of that scrubbing through our ordinances, reformatting them. It's some good work that's been done by the staff and it's coming together very nice. So, again, we had this last time, this is the second reading. One, I think one big piece was the, was the garbage cans and that was something that came out of the downtown district kinda subcommittee, just to put some, borrow, I guess, or try to mimic some, some other places on ordinances, garbage can replacement, garbage can placement.
There were a couple of very minor tweaks.
Couple of minor tweaks.
Changed definitions where they were at and how they were located, it wasn't really a substantial change, but we did, we did mess with the definitions a little bit where they were at within the articles in them. Nothing, nothing that changed the intent of the wording, but it did change the numbering on a couple of them.
Yep. So, again, second reading, nothing changing from.
Second.
Motion is second to accept the repealing of all those chapters I listed and combining them into Title seven. Board has a motion, comments, questions? All right, another roll call vote on this one, please.
Cots?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Galesburg?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Perd?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
Mattoon is here.
Mattoon is here!
Yeah, he could show, I think it was.
I didn't know, sorry Matt.
So he showed up on twelve B, so you can just put it like six, six twenty-two or something like that. So I'd like to make an appointment, Vern Ming, zoning board of appeals alternate. I just need the board to make a motion to approve that appointment.
What was the name?
Vern Ming.
Oh, Vern Ming.
Yeah.
Oh, I certainly make a motion to, to approve the appointment of Vern Ming, to.
Okay.
My second.
Motion is second. Any comments or questions there? Okay, all in favor of approving the appointment for Vern Ming on the zoning board of appeals alternate, say aye.
Aye.
Will oppose, nay? All right, ayes have it. So we're on to new business now, we talked about this in, in the bills, the pay request for Keller Park ball field. So you'll see that, Jared, did you wanna talk to this at all, or kind of talked to, talked about it a little bit, but.
Yeah, so Matt's here, we have any questions? Yeah, there he is, okay. He, he did just walk in. We've got three requests on there, we've got Brian Rock, Wolf Brothers and Bartow Builders. So you'll see the breakdown of the invoices there for the crushed granite, call it the infilled mixes. I don't know what I'm gonna say, what's the, crushed granite or what they are, but the infilled mix in there. And then you see the invoice from Bartow Builders and then you see the breakdown on the backside. Honestly, if we have any questions to this, I really would just defer to Matt here at this point, seeing how he's here.
Okay.
What is the net, just, just, what is the net on that, on, on each one? Not on each one, but total?
The total of this draw?
Yes.
Total of this draw is gonna be at the very, on the second page?
On the second page, it says draw total, so it'll give.
On the second page?
Yeah, but it'll say previous draws, this draw total and the total of the draws. So this one draw is singular, total is the draw total, that's for this one. Previous draws, it'll list there and the sum of those is the total of the draws below that. So twenty-one, twenty-four thousand, one, one hundred and sixty dollars, fifty-seven cents.
Okay, I'm looking at the wrong thing now.
I think it's this one.
It's on the signing page.
It's on what?
It's on the signing page, looks like on page two.
On thirteen.
I don't know what's in here.
Thirteen.
Third to last page in the PDF.
Thank you.
There's also a spreadsheet in there that shows the itemized from one, two and three with the running total. So like the current running total right now of the expenditure is thirty-six thousand fifteen dollars.
Sweet.
There's also two other spreadsheets, the third spreadsheet is the in-kind donation. And that right now is at thirty-eight thousand and twenty-seven dollars.
Nice.
So we're still surpassing our expenses. I just received one from Fair Equipment, so that's forty-five hundred more dollars if they donated. And then I still have to get American materials installed for seeing new labor for the block walls yet. So we're probably fifty thousand or so in donating services.
Okay, any questions for Jared or Matt on these draws?
We did go ahead and kick that out of Fund one-ten, you can see it in Capital Projects now, I know I kept saying we were going to, but we actually did get it done this time. So you'll see that in Fund four-hundred instead of Fund one-ten now.
Is there a difference in marking partial, full, mail check, customer pickup on one of them? Is that intentionally just missing?
That's just a general format that I have.
Oh, it's just your format?
It's my format.
Okay.
I just tried to, I edited it because I gotta do it here and then once we start doing stuff through the escrow call. So I just wanted to try to have a copy, it's all titles format, title company.
Okay.
It's just sometimes in all titles scenario, contractors really like to go pick a check up.
Okay.
I just, for simplicity, I did care for anybody that come here and can check.
Is that, the, the title company transactions and kind of more of a finalized spreadsheet, is that towards the end of the project?
That's, the discussions in here, we just, we don't have that, I haven't pulled any out of that yet, the escrow call has to be finalized.
But do you have to do anything at the end of the year cycle, or do you do it at the end of the project? Or is there gonna be anything we need Jared on that front to help with anything?
I think you guys just gotta know what that expenditure is so you can capitalize the costs.
Yeah, and then we've gotta sign off, so we talked about this last time, so this draw request, we're having all three parties sign. We're having the contractor, we're having, we're having all three parties sign so that we're making sure we're cracking. Has to happen what, regardless of which draw we're making. And then like Matt said, at the end, we have to have that total expenditure so we can capitalize and put it on the books.
Yeah, so I'm just, I guess I'm asking for the board's clarity, when they would expect, you know, if there's something they see at the end of the year or just end of the project, or.
Uh, you're seeing it every month, like it's, all three spreadsheets are, have their running totals. So it's what's the funding for the village, what'll be the fund from the, uh, donated funds, money funds, and then donated in kind. So if you were to run, add those three up at, at any given month, then that's the current value. So the one spreadsheet's still blank because we haven't, our works, you know, December is when we did the stuff from Shields. We have funds in there now, but once we get into that, then that's gonna be when we purchase the lights. And then those, I gotta schedule that, reach back out to CPTC because they're supposed to be installing the light poles.
Okay. Any other questions for Matt or Jared on this topic or this draw request?
Friday, I will have high school students from Acio, Augusta, O'Clair, a bunch of different schools, just gonna get to eight to twelve out there, because I currently teach at this high school. Because I currently teach at this high school, the residential construction program, and they will be out, will be framing the roofs on the two duggles as part of their class.
Nice.
It's actually a makeup day, so they haven't missed. They, I, they do all have.
I like that he schedules his makeup days.
Liability waiver forms. Have to do that through the tech, which releases any parties of what they're doing or where they are in case they.
Do something stupid.
Do something stupid.
Yeah, okay.
That's, I have to, they have to approve because especially since they're high school students and not all eighteen.
Perfect, sounds good.
Make a motion to pay the Keller Park Ballfield pay request.
Second.
Motion is second to approve the draw, this draw request. What's that?
Approve the pay request. You already approved the bills.
Yeah, so for motion is second to approve the draw request, correct?
Yes.
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 Board has a motion. Any comments, questions? Do a roll call vote, please.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Aylesburg.
Yes.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hervison.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Great, thanks, Matt. Things are looking good. So good job. Good work. We appreciate it. Anything else?
I'm going to set up my deer stand on the park. There's all those deer footprints running through this grass.
Right through the grass, yeah. Uh, I, I, we've only had a couple of issues out there. Jared's been aware of those. Just recently, somebody, I think, tried to start my UTV and my issue broke wrong. Like someone tried to stick something in there. I know they did do it this time because this is my caution tape that tied it to my steering wheel and my shifter.
I saw Jamie on it.
Jamie and Josh were doing roadies and playing with it. Josh has been a little bit covetous of it.
Is that why I got to have to take a few of them? People driving it or not?
Okay, thirteen B, fee schedule revisions. If you recall, the fees used to be part of ordinances. Remember when it was, we pulled that part out of there so that if the administrator office felt like there was any updates or needs to do that, we could, we could do that. And but in doing that, they'd bring it to the board. So we're not going through first and second readings anymore on on fee adjustments, but this is the the process with that if we need some updates. So that's what Jared's bringing here. I don't remember the specific instance that came up, but there there was something that came up that said, yeah, we don't, we don't have a fee for that.
Hard surface parking.
Hard surface parking.
Hard surface parking is a thirty dollar ticket plus court costs because we can't take it internally. So if you look at the fee schedule up above, there's two things you'll see. If you come down to page three or four, you see that from what fifty-eight to sixty-eight, they're just defined dollar amount, whereas everything else is between twenty-five and five hundred. That was essentially a way that they had done it previously in ordinance. It said our fee is twenty-five dollars plus whatever the court costs are. Was the way that they allowed that to do that. Colin, when he puts it in his, I'm going to get this wrong if that one's Trax, his software, forgive me if I'm saying the wrong software, it might be Spillment, it might be Trax, I'm not sure which.
His software.
Whichever his software he puts it in, he actually goes in and signs a dollar amount to it because he has the court cost. There's a very defined fee schedule for this. It's what Oaklair County is going to charge and it's significantly more than we get on any things. But he has to go in and physically insert that. So even all these that have twenty-five to five hundred in our fee schedule, there is a dollar amount assigned to each of those because the court costs and are twenty-five dollars. Anyways, he went to go put in some of this parking stuff and it's not in our ordinance. It's not one we just recently scrubbed. It's not something we just took out, but we've never had a defined fee schedule. We've just charged the same as we have for all our other parking. It's what was written down, but we couldn't find any fee schedule ordinance to tie it to. I'm certain it existed at some point, but we can't find where that tie exists. So Colin has not written a single one of those tickets. We promised everybody that sent out letters and said, you guys have to comply. He hasn't written a single one of them because he doesn't have the ability to issue the ticket without defining. Without defining it. So, so the hard surface parking you'll see is a hundred and seventy-five dollar fine. It's thirty dollars to the village. The rest of that goes to Oaklair County.
The county?
Yeah, well.
Court, to the court.
Oaklau County Court. It's not to the county per se, it's to the.
Court system, process.
Yep, it's the court system. And then the other, so you see those parking related ones are all in there. The other one that you'll see is a thirty dollar. Our snow parking in one part of our ordinance said thirty dollars, somewhere else it said twenty-five dollars. The uniform fee schedule we adopted is a thirty dollar parking ticket. Other than handicap, that one is a much higher, I don't remember what it is, but it's a much higher fee in the uniform parking schedule. But our snow was twenty-five in one part and thirty in the other. And Colin said, please update that so it's the same in both. So it's that fifty-seven through sixty-seven. That's the update that Colin has to have to be able to assign in it as opposed to just writing down that it's thirty dollars plus court fees. We actually need to adopt it in the fee schedule.
The nuisance and the disorderly properties, is there a timeframe attached to those? Like, because like for new public nuisance, you have second offense.
What line are you looking at there?
I'm looking at twenty-four and then also at forty-five. Or yes, forty-five.
Yeah, so the public nuisance, the what is defined as a public nuisance and how, how you are defined as a public nuisance, what the enforcement action, that's all defined in ordinance. It's just the fee schedule, we're going to charge you if you're cussed it for it. So the, it was in ninety-nine, it just got repealed and put into Title seven. What we're defining is a public nuisance. And how the enforcement action for that would take place. Same with disorderly property. You see, that was all in one ninety-nine previously. And we will actually update those references. That's a clerical change, but until we've adopted it tonight, we couldn't adopt the, so you'll see it changed from one ninety-nine if you came in and requested a fee schedule next week, it'll say Title seven and not the old one, but we couldn't change it until you adopted the previous.
Anybody?
Building permits, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Building permits stay with Fall Creek?
Yeah.
The money?
Well, kind of, we ended up paying our building inspector a good chunk of that, but yeah. But those are paid directly here and then disseminated here. We're not sending them to Oaklair County and getting them.
Sorry, Tim?
Nope, I was just going to say, you know, take your time and ask any other questions. So you, perfect.
And the building fees, that's all already already adopted in our current ones. Just every time we make a change, you'll see the entire fee schedule.
I do see some in Title ten, you probably don't have to go through there. There's going to be some conflicting fee. There's some places in there where it says twenty-five dollars, not more than twenty-five dollars, and so you're going to have to bring that.
Colin pointed that out when he was looking for a new fee schedule. He said, yeah, there's some of these that you have to update.
Okay, it's fine.
Where we at? Two months ago with that.
Yeah, I'm kidding.
But yeah, we were aware of that.
Okay. Any comments, questions or anything? So I think Jared, you're just looking for approval of the fee schedule as presented here?
Yeah.
In a motion.
Make a motion to approve the fee schedule.
All right, there's a motion. Is there a second yet on that?
A second.
Motion is second. The board has a motion to approve the fee schedule as Jared presented. Anybody else that you need any more time or questions, comments?
I guess I wasn't aware that we had a snowmobile hours of operation.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, and that is?
I don't know, I can go look it up. It's.
It's listed in there. It's a nice little reference for you, so.
Is that in? Sorry.
Let me take, take your time, I guess offline, if you want to update ordinances for tho- those parameters, you could, you could bring that forward. There was something there.
No, I'm fine.
Uh, any comments or questions in regards to the fee schedule, fee amounts? Okay, do we do a roll call?
Roll call, it's a finance.
Yeah, let's do a roll call of this one, please.
Rapp.
Yes.
Aylesburg.
No.
Goodman.
Yes.
Hervison.
Yes.
Heard.
Yes.
Cox.
Yes.
Mattoon.
Yes.
Okay, Fall Creek area fire district budget. There we go. Lean back here.
Last Monday, the Fire District Board approved the two thousand twenty-three budget, which we raised seven hundred and fifty dollars from the two thousand twenty-two budget. The valuations for the three municipalities varied quite a much, quite much for two thousand twenty-three. Village only went up three percent. Town of Lincoln went up nine percent. The town of Luddington went up thirteen percent.
Yes.
Which means in two thousand twenty-three, Luddington will pay two thousand six hundred and sixty-six dollars more, Lincoln five hundred and sixty dollars more. And the village will go down two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars compared to two thousand twenty-two. That looks good this year for the village. I think in two thousand twenty-four, I believe the village was reevaluated this year?
No, the book evaluation's happening next year, but this year, next year, but yeah.
It's equalized though, right?
Yeah, it is equalized value, so that, it depends on how they do their assessment. But if you look at the six-year average, it goes up, last year we went up three thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Now we're down a thousand.
Two thousand. You look at the average, we've gone up seven, that hundred and thirty-five over six years. It goes up and down depending on.
Yeah, it's.
We'll take it.
Usually the village is going up faster than the two municipalities. Now, I think what they'll be, well, I believe we sold eleven acres of land from Reather, that'll add on. Maybe not much, but what, three, four new houses in two thousand twenty-two that'll go on the tax roll? So if, if the two townships don't build any new houses, then the village will pay more in two thousand twenty-four. The, the, the main equalized value is in residential on all three municipalities. Because of forestry and the farmland and things like that aren't valued at near what a new house is. So anyway, for two thousand twenty-three, it looks good for the village.
What was the negative?
Two thousand four hundred and seventy-six dollars and ninety-one cents.
Thank you.
Did you have that number, Jared, when you?
Yeah, he, he got that.
It was about my only happy number that I just didn't from somewhere external. But that one was a good one.
Yes. That was the way the valuations went. We could have went down on our fire budget ten thousand dollars and the two townships would have still paid more and the village less.
A motion to approve.
So that, that goes in with our budget, right? So it's, it's good information, logistics or background information.
Included your budget.
So it'll, it'll be part of the, the budget, well, the next time, so. Any questions for Wayne?
Oh, I might say that, you know, we have purchased a new fire truck. I guess it is done, but not in our possession yet.
When do you hope to take delivery?
By December first.
Yeah, and then November first, December.
And at Christmas, she'll ride up and down with a Santa suit on, up and down each street.
I thought he was going to put a wreath on the front of the.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that's kind of cool.
Yeah.
It will look a lot bigger than the old truck. When we bought the old pumper that we have now, we had to buy it that size because we were still located in the old station.
Yeah.
And that's the only truck that could fit. Now we've got room. This new truck would be probably three foot too high to get into the doors down there.
Okay, thanks for that. Moving on to thirteen D, two thousand twenty-three proposed budget.
You didn't want Matt's motion, right?
No, no, Matt.
Thanks, Wayne.
Yeah.
Okay, I can retract it. That's fine. I was just excited.
No, I get it. Okay, thirteen D, two thousand twenty-three proposed budget. To, if you want to present, I guess we've, I think most of the board was there when we talked about.
I was there for most of it, left, right.
Yeah, I think.
So I'm not going to go down this in detail like we did in committee, um, if that's okay by everybody.
For highlights, for things that.
Yep, I just want to put on a couple of, of high level things and then it's, and then a couple of things we changed. So let's start out on the first page. You've actually got it on your packet. And there's items highlighted in yellow. So the first page, we have the taxes levied. You'll see a proposed increase. It's not necessarily in taxes levied, but it's, we're taking some out of debt service and putting it into taxes levied. In addition to a change in how we're talking about funding the library that we talked about last month, or last, in the committee meeting, we talked about levying five thousand five hundred dollars for the library. We talked about this in committee, they had been getting, the residents of Fall Creek last year were, or I guess this year, were assessed thirteen thousand dollars for the inter municipality fund and the village received, or the village library received twenty-four hundred dollars of that. The remaining eleven thousand dollars went from the village to Altoona, O'Clair, I don't, we're actually sending to Augusta this year, but to Altoona and O'Clair. We were sending our tax dollars into, into the other municipalities.
They were taking.
No, we were sending. It was part of an inter municipality agreement that was entered into a very long time ago. And with the invent, or with the adjoining of the library system with, it's not Indian Head Fin, but if.
More, the Moore system and ifless, yeah.
With ifless and more, we have access to all those resources. We used to need access to a regional library and we had to pay for it. If we didn't have the book, we'd have to pay to get a copy of it or vice versa, but we had to play under a different set of rules. Like, there's more to it than that.
Where did you put the packet? I'm sorry.
Thirteen D. Thirteen D.
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 Thirteen.
Anyways, it became an outdated thing. We were one of two counties in the state that were still doing it. When they came up with those library systems, there's a bunch of funding associated with that. And one of the agreements is that you should, um, have access to regional libraries and you have the ability to go, and we have a courier that comes back and brings books back and forth. The whole concept of it was honestly a little dated and inadequate. And Charlene and I, when I first started here, we're looking, I was like, why are we doing this? This seems like a really bad idea for the village. And for the village, it was a bad idea. When we started talking with the other libraries about getting out of it, they said, guys, keep your mouths shut. Yeah, you're, uh, it's costing your taxpayers some money, but you're getting two thousand dollars from us and it doesn't affect your levy limit. This was all outside of levy limit. And the, it's some of the other municipalities, I don't remember, it was, there was some concern among the other municipalities that we were rocking the boat. And you remember at the time, we talked about it quite a lot, said, no, this is better for the taxpayers. We need to withdraw from this. So we, we went through the process. It was an eighteen month, from the time you have to give notice on such a day. Anyways, this is our first year that we will be outside of the inter municipality agreement. So taxes will go down by thirteen thousand dollars-ish from what they were last year. All things, everything else being equal, the village would be collecting thirteen thousand dollars less. Now, I know in committee, I said that it was county tax, and although it's assessed as a county special tax, it was actually included in our mail rate. So like I said something about that to Renee, the next question, I thought, actually, you were, you were a little off on that. Yes, it is a county tax, or it was a county special service charge, but it was actually included in the village's mail rate. So when we talk about it, it really will be the village that gets credit for it. Because I was talking about, like, here we go. So when we talk about it, it really will be the village that gets credit for it, cause I was talking about, like, here we go, and full out of thirteen thousand, and the county's gonna get credit for that amount of money, that's actually not the case, I was pleasantly wrong. Anyways, there will be thirteen thousand dollars less levied, but there's also that money not coming in. So committee made a recommendation to, um, recoup five thousand five hundred of that dollars, so we're dropping the tax less than what we were. But the library actually is getting a little bit more of that than what they had last year. So that, for, that top number reflects that change, and it reflects the change of two thousand six hundred and seventy dollars coming out of debt service levy that we had extra capacity. And I had to, uh, take because our transportation aid is lower once again. When I talked about transportation aid coming in, um, we didn't know that number yet. Surprise, surprise, which is the next highlighted item, we had it budgeted at seventy-three eighty, and it came in at eighty-six. Seventy-sixty, right? We'll keep, we'll keep buzz, we'll keep buzzing through, but just as a general highlight, we are bringing in ten thousand dollars less in revenue than we had last year from some of our, uh, great funding sources, less transportation aid, less expenditure restraint, restraint, less shared rev, well, shared revenue's almost identical, but just in general, the money we're bringing in has gone down and our expenses have gone up.
I have a couple of questions, Jared. Shared revenue, we do have that, that number is two thirty-nine, one ten.
Yep, that is a good number.
Okay, and I understand that we're down in the state transportation aid, I wanna go back to this, this top number. Okay, so we were looking at four hundred thirty-seven eighty, now we're raising it to four forty-five, two fifty.
Yes.
Cause we're going to then, what we're planning on doing is, how are we getting to five thousand five hundred, because I mean, I, I, we don't have that taxing authority anymore because we're not in that inter municipality agreement, so where are we getting the five thousand, the authority to, to tax five thousand five hundred?
There's a couple of things that we're talking about here.
Mm-hmm.
First is, cause it's not just five thou, if you do the math between the two, it's not just five thousand five hundred, there's also a two, uh, six, seven, zero that you will see is coming off when we get into debt service levy, Fund Three Hundred. You will see that we are levying, we were, a levying eighty-eleven, eight, zero.
Let's just, let's turn our debt service, let's just move here so that we, we can make, this is very important, this is when you make.
We made a debt service three hundred, it's on page eleven.
Page eleven, okay.
Yep, so you'll see that that top line was eighty-two, zero, one, one.
Was eighty-two, zero, one, one.
And is now down to seventy-nine, three, four, one, that's all within our existing, uh, levy limit, it's just what category we're assigning it to.
All you did is just shift it from one category to the other, that's what we're seeing.
For a portion of it. The five, five, or the five thousand five hundred that we're talking about levying, that was levied as a county special service charge and dumped into our levy limit, we would once again be shifting it outside levy limit, we have no room in levy limit, so we have a.
So we're at maximum levy limit?
Yeah, yeah, so we have a, so we have five thousand five hundred dollars that was being charged as a, uh, special service charge outside of levy limit, thirteen thousand dollars. And we're saying, we want to, we want to still be able to send part of that to the library, but not all of it, we want the citizens to take, uh, what the committee talked about, was letting the citizens, you know, take a tax break where we can, not sending it to Eau Claire, we wanna, we wanna give a tax break there, but we do want to make the library.
You're just trying to recoup five thousand five hundred of the thirteen thousand that's lost.
So where we're doing it to is a tax, so there's, uh, a levy limit worksheet, where it says, this is what your base levy limit is, these are the things that you can, your percent of new, new construction, this is what you can assess, and then you flip the page over and there's, and here's your exemptions. If you hit one of these exemptions, you can move, you can raise above that. So one of those, for instance, is the fire district, if the fire district were to raise our rates five thousand dollars, we could levy above our link.
So what is the rule on that levy limit?
Debt service is what we.
Debt service.
Debt service is how we're moving that, we're putting two thou, five thousand five hundred dollars of our general fund budget less into debt service, and putting that in levy limit from debt service. That, the, the workaround is the debt service workaround, cause we have debt, but it's a debt service workaround. We are already doing that with twenty thousand, and the, um, this would, uh, increase that amount to twenty thousand five hundred and fifty.
Alright, so let's be clear, so residents are clear, that this is, it's not actually a raising of any of their, that we are responsible for at the village level, we're not talking county school or anything else, village. We're not raising anybody's taxes, in effect, they're actually going down.
Yep, about seven thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Not quite seven thousand, but.
I understand, I got it.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Another, another way to think of it is you would, you've taken that thirteen thousand four hundred dollars, it was a regional library fee. We exited out of that, that shorts the library twenty-four hundred dollars. Plus, there's new costs and expenses, so we just call it, we're now shorting, we're short-funding the library fifty-five hundred dollars. So that's, instead, we say, well, instead of paying debt, we're gonna try to fund the library with fifty-five hundred dollars. We moved debt payments over to the library, still saving the seven, eight thousand dollars, but now we gotta try to pay off the debt, debt, I mean, so in the end, taxes go down. And it's just a different light item.
It's just a different light item, we're actually saving seven thousand, that's what I'm gonna make clear.
Yep.
And overall, getting out of the, immense, the municipal agreement is better, cause what did we pay in? Fifteen thousand dollars, Charlene, we got two thousand back, or something like that? So it was, we're, we're in the game.
Yeah, so in general, what, what just happened is we saved the money, taxpayer some money, and we took some of the money that we were giving to Eau Claire and was able to give the library, well, proposing to give the library, um, a little better.
No, we're keeping it at Fall Creek instead of giving it to Eau Claire, some other library, yes, okay.
Um, thank you, Charlene, and Jared.
Yep. Did that answer your questions, do we move on, or you still got more questions you wanna go?
Not on this page.
Okay, so I'm gonna, we've already discussed, as I can talk about it, but he has further questions, there will be a higher-level, uh, PowerPoint presentation is my plan for our budget hearing, just give us some of those big categories, Cliff Notes version, cause people coming to look at the budget don't wanna look at a twenty-something-page document, um, I do plan on a Cliff Note version that we'll have for our budget hearing next month. But just, just broad categories, we're up a little bit in, um, in wages, we're up a little bit in insurance, um, we're up a lot in insurance.
Do you want me to interrupt you as you go by these pages?
Stop, stop, just stop and tell me where you've got concerns.
I'm on page two.
Okay.
Okay, and then we have employee, we're at admin, and we're the third line from the bottom, admin employee incentives. And so we had zero in twenty twenty, we had four hundred and eighty in twenty twenty-one that we actually spent, and twenty twenty-two, nine thirty, and then seven hundred, we budgeted.
If I could pause, sorry. The employee Christmas party is what we did with that, or, for instance, when we purchased a plaque for Renee, we're hitting twenty-five years, um, of, the board presented her with a dedication for service.
Okay, so it's a plaque for service, it's a Christmas party?
It's whatever, yes.
I got it, I just wanna know what is it, I mean.
Can you state what PDF page you're on actually for me?
Yeah, I'll go to the PDFs, and I'll, I'll just go off PDF, I'll put this away, and I'll go through it off PDFs, and I'll be on the same. I apologize, I don't really apologize, I will change the way I'm doing it.
Yes, very good.
May, by load, I will. What's your next question that you have?
My next question is on page three.
Okay.
It's under the elections, we're at the top of page three, and our budget for twenty twenty-three is at two thousand eight hundred.
Yes.
In the twenty twenty-three, um, we have no November election. And so we just have the April election, and I did go into Wisconsin Elections Commission and double-checked that, I knew that anyway, but I wanted to make sure I have it here, this is from the Wisconsin Elections Commission, we have two elections, a spring primary, if we need it, and then we have the spring election in two thousand twenty-three, but yet we're budgeting the same as if we were in a year of presidential election year.
We are.
And so, but we don't have that election, so could we bring that down appropriately, because we won't spend that much?
We could, the concern there is that if they call a special election, which does happen from time to time, we have to bear the cost of it, if the state says we're gonna do another election for X, so-and-so resigns, and the governor can call, you know, you can call, depending on where they're at, you can call another election, it happens, and we don't have the ability to change it. We can legitimately tighten that one up, um, by almost a thousand dollars. Um, there, 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 we can pull, cause honestly, we've got three elections in there, we can pull an election out of that. And, and we can tighten that line item, um, it's a very small spot in our budget, and honestly, we need a little bit of cushion in a couple of places, and that's one of the places that there still is a little bit of cushion that we could pull if we had to, um, but there is some unknown in that as well. But yes, you are right, we could, we, we could shrink that ever so slightly.
Okay. Alright, and then we have the same reason with the legal notices for the same, you know, we have five hundred, but that's.
Yeah.
It's the same, it's tightening it up a little bit to make it more accurate, thank you. That's all I have until you get to another page, keep going.
Okay, well, I don't have a lot of changes from where we talked about previous, and those are all high pictures, so the next place I wanna point something out is on the bottom of page four. Bottom of page four, we have, um, fire service protection charge, which, uh, which is heard from, uh, Wayne about. Originally, we used essentially last year's number, which was the fifty-five thousand. We're seeing that fifty-two, two-five-zero, so that has now dropped, um, it's included in this number, but last presentation, I didn't have that. And then if you look on the bottom of page six, you will see that proposed increase to the, uh, Fall Creek area library, Parks and Rec five-one seven thousand five, three, eight, zero.
Page six?
Yep, page six, uh, almost to the bottom, it's the Park, Park and Recreation, uh, category, and then you see payment to F C P L.
Oh, let me see. Okay, and then you were putting it at sixty-five, zero?
Nope.
No, that's what it was, it's going up to seventy.
And that's that change of five-five, zeros, Phil.
Five-five, zero, zero. What are you saying to me, Jared, would you repeat it?
It's the same number we were just talking about.
That five thousand we talked about, up above, the five thousand five hundred dollars that we changed in the first line already, that we're moving outside of levy limit.
Oh.
That same five thousand five hundred dollars we talked about here is reflected, um, in the payment to the Fall Creek area library, cause we've shown it coming in in revenue, and this is where we're sending it out to the library, is the expense here.
Okay, I see it, alright, thank you.
Yep. And then that's all I have for general fund.
I have a question on this page, page six, it, why are we so specific with the twelve thousand, two dollars? Is it?
Sorry, which one?
I'm sorry, um, I just, it, it's just curious, on park restroom, uh, maintenance and supplies.
There's not a good, uh, reason for it, typically, we round it to the ten dollars, when we're typing something in the computer, or adding something up every once in a while, we leave a dollar amount.
We, we, we just relieve it as zero, so, okay, that's fine.
Yeah, but, but tip, yeah, typically, we round it to ten dollars, but.
Alright, and that's fine, it's, it's a minor detail and it really doesn't matter, but anyway, I just thought, is there some reason?
No.
That I didn't know, okay, and then, I already know the answer to the rest of that, ball field juice is why we went up, because we're gonna see people using the ball field more, that's why it had to go up.
Okay, so now we go on to Fund two oh, or two-two-zero, this is the library fund. There's actually two of these, and I don't wanna talk about all of the numbers on these, you'll see one right here, and you see one at the end.
On page number, please, Sharon?
This is page eight.
Thank you.
There's two proposed library budgets, depending on what we discuss for employee incentive, or employee, uh, compensation for adjustments. So you see two different ones, but on either one of them, it includes an increase of five thousand five hundred, that same seventy-five, three, eight, up from sixty-five. You see it in about three different places, well, that money's changed, but this is.
That five, same five thousand.
That's showing it's hitting the library budget, and then we don't have any changes to the library, um, and you see those one right after another. Once again, we'll talk about that later, if we want to discuss that, um, do that after. Talk about that a little later, no change in inland lake from where we were. Once again, we didn't really get the ability to change that, even if we wanted to, that was approved, um, at our annual inland lake meeting per state statute, it's a little bit weird the way that timing works, but that's already been approved. Fund three hundred, you see the change in taxes, levying for debt service from eighty-two, zero, one, one, to seventy-nine, three, four, one. And you see a change in the special assessment, it was twelve thousand, and it's gone to thirteen-three, that's on page eleven, and you're, uh, and it's page thirteen, if you're going down based on the PDF, it's page thirteen, if you're looking at the pages at the bottom of the funds, it's page eleven. But we, we firmed up the number on how much we expected to pull in from special assessment, we used a rough number of twelve thousand, it was really twelve thousand two hundred and thirty-three. And then if you look at the Keller Park, um, Co-Clean, that was the parking lot slash, uh, road that we did, that is our highest interest loan, so the payment is fifteen thousand four hundred, and then we are making additional payment in that loan. Karen, you've asked about this several times, about how we're determining where we do that. If we have additional money in debt service, where we're putting it, we're putting it to our highest interest loan, which is that loan. But.
You're on line item two oh four, right?
Yep.
Thank you. So that's the reason we're jumping from fifteen thousand to twenty-three.
Is, is it additional principal payment to our highest interest loan, yes.
And that's because of an excess revenue over, well, I mean, what, why, where are we getting this money to do this?
That's in our debt service, so we've all, so we've got an existing resolution that says, um, well, for starters, I'm gonna start back and say that we've been levying the eighty-two, zero, one, one, for debt service, has been our standard, that we've levied for debt service for years and years and years. If we had excess, um, room in our debt service, we've put it to the highest interest loan.
Yep.
We did shrink that a little bit, cause I just, with transportation aid, we didn't have, we didn't have more money, we did shrink that slightly, and let us pull that two thousand seven hundred, six hundred and seventy dollars. But the rest of the excess money is still, you know, we're putting those other several thousand dollars on, um, that loan, cause it's our highest interest loan, per our.
So my question was originally, so that we had the difference between this, this fifteen thousand four hundred and thirty-eight and the twenty-three thousand six eleven, that was, we collected more revenue than we spent, and that, and I understand the agreement, that's where, I mean, I'm just trying to look at, what, you know.
We haven't yet, it's not necessarily excess revenue or expense, but yes, you can think of it that way, that's.
That's what I'm asking, yes.
But that's more money in debt service than we are contractually obligated to pay, so we are putting that towards, but yes. Highest interest rate loan first. Four hundred, there, there have been no changes from our previous discussions. Four-ten, four-twelve, or four-twelve and four-twenty, or, yeah, sorry, four-ten, which is, um, to District One, no changes to District Two, no changes. However, in four-twenty, which is page sixteen on the Polaris document, but I think it's eighteen on your, um, PDF. We talked about the, the vehicle, um, charge, about, uh, what, what that truck would be, I did get a firm number today, um, whether we do that or not. I've still got some questions, but that is what that number is, um, the fifty-seven, zero, 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 which had previously been a zero. In water fund, we have a few, sorry, if there's more questions, I realize I'm moving fairly quickly.
I was lost where you were the last time, I got, I was through the kids, and then, but I, we went to someplace else.
So.
I don't have questions on tid.
Yeah, behind the tid, we go to four-twenty, which is capital equipment repair.
Right, and so, yeah, okay, that was, I was like, okay, where's the truck?
Yeah, sorry, so, there was no truck in it, I didn't have that number yet, I now have that number.
Fifty-seven, correct?
Okay, so what's the truck, traction and this?
Work truck?
Work truck, dump bag, snowplow.
Nice.
It's a replacement for our two thousand and eight, uh.
Ooh, yeah.
Yeah.
And what's the number, or do we have that yet?
Fifty-seven, zero, zero.
Fifty-seven, zero, zero?
Zero, fifty-seven thousand.
Fifty-seven thousand.
Yeah. That's a replacement for the, what, um. Now, you get to water, and we did actually have several changes in water. Other revenues, meter rent, um, I don't know where, where we lost a tie, but we lost a tie somewhere. We showed seven thousand four hundred dollars in other revenue rent, but it needs to be eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, as it correlates to our other ones. So we, we lost a tie in there, um, we still come up to zero budget, but there are several line items that we changed. But you'll remember, or maybe you won't remember, we had repairs to plant where we should've had twenty-six thousand dollars in, um, per backup, cause I don't know if you were around for this, but you'll notice that we have zero, or a thousand dollars in it now, and twenty-six thousand dollars this year.
That was one of my questions, and this is for.
So part of this goes back to the difference in how the P S E wants us to classify things. So for instance, last year, we talked, I keep using the water tower as an example, when the water tower needed repainted, we had to sandblast it, wa, draw it down, sandblast it, repaint it. Under general accounting principles, you would say that that is extending the life, if you didn't do anything, it would continue to depreciate, it would continue to deteriorate, at some point, your, um, your, uh, product would deteriorate and you would need to replace it. Once it's been fully depreciated, written off your books, essentially, you would, uh, replace it. So when we upgraded it, the accountant said, yes, you have extended the life of this, you know, if the life was going to extend, you know, die on, your useful life would've ended in ten years, you've, I can't use the number, I'm just using the magic number, cause I don't know what it is.
Pulling it out of your hat?
Yeah, but, you know, if it. Yeah, but you know, if it would have been ten years, you've painted it, so now it's gonna last fifteen or twenty years. So they took the cost of that, capitalized it, and then are depreciating it again. That's what we did do. P S C came in and said, no, water tower painting is not extending the life. That is general maintenance. You guys need to be classifying that to operation and maintenance, and you need to be expensing it, not capitalizing it. That's, that's an example of things they wanted to see us put into operating expenses and not into capitalizations. So there were several of those that they didn't like the way we'd been categorizing them versus capital versus operational expense. So this is, you'll notice we've got a higher number here, and then down below, we've got a, outside services has dropped. But it's still a high number, but I might be.
Outside services is here, seventeen thousand.
Where last time?
It was, well, we had ten, but we were at twenty-one. I mean, that's what we actually spent so far.
Yeah, and we were thirty thousand dollars.
Thirty thousand and twenty.
Yeah, and they want a lot of what we're categorizing there to come up here. They also.
It's just a shifting of the lines, except that we did move some of the capital, capitalization into
Yep.
operations and maintenance.
Yep, so that line item was twenty-four, eight, three. We put it back up to twenty-five, six, nine. And then there's, at the very bottom, there's of the water fund, there's a deposit to short-lived asset reserve. Part of the covenants of our loan, we got the loan for McKinley. We had to commit to certain things that, you know, we have a debt service reserve. A lot of the things we've already committed to and already are doing, it's just part of general good practice for municipal bonding. But one of them was that you had to have a a short-lived asset reserve. We did not establish a specific short-lived asset reserve. We had an asset reserve, but it wasn't specific to a short-lived asset reserve, and we actually got bitten up by that last year. I wasn't real happy about it. I felt like what we had counted, but the auditor disagreed. So this year, we are budgeting for a short-lived af, short-lived asset reserve, meaning that we're putting money into an account, and if a fire hydrant blows that, fire hydrant, probably a long asset. I'm trying to think of what a short-lived asset is in the water department. The chemigation pumps that we use to dose chlorine, if one of those pumps blows out, we would then theoretically have a savings account for some money we could take to spend instead of pulling it directly out of operation and maintenance. Theoretically, we have an account for a short-lived asset. And obviously, that chemigation might not be expensive enough, and it might not be over our threshold to capitalize. But something like that, we would have a savings account for. At the sewer plant, we've done that with the mixers in the past, motors, expensive things that have gone wrong. We had one at the sewer plant, but even then, they didn't like it. So the next line item, you'll see that we've added one to the sewer as well. Fund six-twenty, it was nineteen forty-one for plant repairs. And I needed to add the thousand dollars to short-term assets, so we pulled it out of plant repairs and put it in another category that I can use as repairs for short-term assets. And now you see a thousand dollars going to the R G loan reserve for short-term assets, and there was no change to garbage.
So, that's a question on the there's another fund for both water and sewer, right, that reserves, really, for future?
So if you look at the line right above that, we're putting one thousand, four hundred and fifty for loan reserve, that's essentially saying that you have to have money going aside if you have a crappy year, and you, you know. Honestly, I don't know what you could do that would.
Yeah, I'm thinking about more like a big, big expense, you know, some.
Sewer does.
Possibly, sewer does.
So sewer does, we're required by our covenants for that one, that sewer does have a better reserve for the treatment plant specifically. It's not for collections. But for the treatment plant specifically, sewer does have a fund. What are we, two hundred and seventy thousand, maybe?
Is that what the level is right now?
Yeah. I, don't, don't quote me on that. I, I could be way out in left field on that.
But water does not have that.
It does not have that requirement. No, we do have a little bit of money in capital for water project, but it's very little amount, and say, well, sewer.
Is there a line item for that?
No, we're not. No, only excess revenue.
Excess whatever is left over at the end of the year from the planned budget.
Okay, no.
But that'll change now if we fund depreciation.
Yes, and this budget does show us funding depreciation, so we would be funding that account.
And I don't know if everybody was wrong for that, but we get, we get written up for that every year, right, for monitors or a finding, sorry, it's a finding.
Finding.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not.
It's not right. It's a, it's a finding that they recommend.
It's a finding, but it's not a material finding, meaning it's not, we're not doing something that's no gross negligence per se. It's not necessarily good business practice, but the administrator's not stealing the petty cash. It's not.
It's just not sound financial planning, because you'll have to take bigger loan, you know, same. You can save money for your next water street project or whatever, and try to do anything, but there's not.
And that's a balanced budget in all funds.
And you'll see garbage, but nothing really changed.
Oh, sorry, I said we didn't change anything in garbage, but yeah, we didn't change anything.
And did we talk about that last year? Like, we weren't gonna revisit that, right? We did like we talked like a two dollars for, because of, you know, that the study said two dollars, but we only did a dollar, sort of hinkering thing. We're not looking to do anything different with garbage. No.
We visited that mid-year when we did the.
That was mid-year.
Yeah, so that, that, that revision is included here.
Yeah.
But it's not, I don't think there was any intent in visiting that for a while.
Yeah.
My, my.
I just couldn't recall. I know we did a.
My recollection of that was that we made the adjustment we were gonna make, and seemed that we were done. I could be wrong on that, but that was my recollection.
Any comments or questions for Jared on the budget and budget sheets that were presented here? Because I, I think there's gonna be a portion that we want to move into close session.
I have questions, but I know that needs to be closed sessions.
Yeah, so before we, there's a portion in here, I think, finalize some of the numbers and talk about some of the details, and I want to go into close session, and then, coming out of close session, then we move to propose the twenty-twenty-three budget.
Preliminary, because we're gonna have to take it to public hearing.
Yeah, preliminary, sorry, approve the preliminary numbers to a public hearing with, so. So if you make your motion, I think we want to allow Kelly and Mike maybe to stay in?
Yeah, and they'll be like that, but.
Are you guys okay? Is the board okay? Friendly adjustment, um, agenda to do fourteen A, security camera. Municipalities cover that, and then the only thing left is we have a close session?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, let's do that.
First for me.
Yep, so fourteen A, let's do that first before we go into close session. Or assuming we, the vote goes that way. So fourteen A, security cameras, add, so this must have came, is this something coming out of?
It's coming out of the community.
Community, okay. What do we, what do we got, I guess? How many recommendations with that?
The recommendation was that we were gonna say, buying the camera via a show camera.
Yes, the recommendation was to spend up to perhaps four hundred dollars, I've got some prices of some, to install a cam, a trail cam perhaps at the park rather than go the alternate route of cameras and internet and all that stuff at this time. But we have to find a good trail cam that would capture kind of what we're looking at for now, and see how that works to start.
You're gonna use one that plays back to the phone or an iPad or something?
We can. We can do it, or you can go pull a card. Honestly, we know when we have the vandalism and.
Well, so if you use, if you use the active ones.
They can't steal it.
Well, they can't steal it, and if you gave it to the officer, it will tell you when whatever goes by.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not opposed to that.
Like instantly, yeah.
I'm not opposed to that at all.
You can put one on the side of your fence, and when the deer walks into your property, you're like, oh, the deer's in my property. Or whatever it is. I mean, they are very, I mean, that would work.
Yeah, that, that would get you too, if you, if you would have a monthly.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
If we go on your cell phone, Bill.
Yeah. That, that's within the, that's within the administrators.
Definitely.
Right, because then you'll know, you'll know just about when something happens.
This is the twelve thousand.
Because then in way at eleven o'clock at night, if something happens down there, somebody will know. Otherwise, they won't know until tomorrow when they pull a card.
With the camera itself.
Yeah, the cameras.
And all the officers could have the app on their phone. Could be outreach then, too, you have to go up and pull a card.
Yep, totally agree on this end.
You could mount it above, angling down, and as long as there's some type of power source, a lithium battery, nobody hardly ever could change it, especially if it's some.
So it sounds like the board, I think, will get a motion to do the four hundred dollars, give you two of them, and then.
Put five hundred dollars just in case if there's a concern. If that's okay, up to, I don't have that.
Okay, if the board, I think, somebody can craft a motion to say up to five hundred dollar purchase and allow the monthly cell charges to.
Motion to approve up to five hundred dollars on two or whatever cameras. We need real-time cameras that excluding monthly data plan. We understand that that's gonna be on top of that.
You want to allow it or include it? Yeah, five hundred dollars is not including, it's just the purchase price, but in addition to the purchase price, you're saying allow a monthly?
Yeah, that works, Tim.
Okay. Yeah, motion is second. Any other comments, questions here? Good idea.
Yeah.
All right, board, is the motion is to roll call vote?
Haylesworth?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Tatts?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Okay, so we won't have anything for fifteen. We already touched on that, so if we can go back to thirteen E, if somebody wants to make that motion, and in that motion, we can give Mike and Kelly to be allowed in, in the close session. Include that in your motion, please.
Make a motion to move the closed session and invite Mike and Kelly into that.
Yeah, the motion is your second.
Our second.
Motion is second. Anything in comments, questions before we go? Roll call vote, please.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Hurd?
Yes.
Tatts?
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Raff?
Yes.
Haylesworth?
No.
Okay, so it's seven twenty-three, we're moving into close session. The twenty-twenty-three proposed budget that we're gonna be talking about. So does anybody else have any, sorry, you, you're okay? Leslie, you're okay? Would you? Okay. Does anybody have any comments or further questions on the twenty-twenty-three proposed budget?
I do, and I don't know if it is appropriate at this time, if it's even part of the, when I'm looking at the capital projects fund. I don't know if it's part of this budget, or how, you know, that it has to go under the budget review and the public hearing. But I was here for that part of the meeting, the committee meeting last week. And Jared, you had explained about the three hundred thousand. I'm on page, I'm on page thirteen of this, and I have to point it on the.
That's all right, I got it here.
Okay, on a tablet. I'm not sure where this is on the tablet. But it's the capital projects fund. The different things that we are looking at allocating in the two thousand and twenty-three budget to spend from that fund, and we have three hundred thousand dollars for the capital projects, for the pickleball courts and playground equipment. And the way that we would just fund that would be out of this capital project fund, and I don't know how the R A T R thing comes in here. Is that still all? I heard the firemen say something very bluntly about it, and I didn't know that that was public knowledge yet about.
Yeah, that's public.
R A T R.
It was still in ten acre, that was, the purchase agreement was approved in open session.
Okay, so that is, that, that's public knowledge.
You can't talk about anything you want and related to that, but that there's been a purchase agreement, has been agreed to, that the details of it necessarily haven't all been.
Okay, well, then I can just refer to the details.
Acres, ten acre.
So we're gonna get a certain amount of money for those acreage, and then that will go into the capital fund. That amount.
That's the way where the board decided to.
And I, I won't say the number, because we don't wanna, I, we don't wanna say the numbers, it's fine. And then we're gonna spend a certain amount of money to put in the infrastructure. We don't have to say that number. I know it's not determined yet, but it's a, it's a nice.
Of the infrastructure, yes.
It's two hundred thousand.
A portion of it.
Yeah, a portion of it. And so then we have the three hundred thousand here in the capital project fund for a couple of those park projects. I would like us to just discuss and think about the possibility of being able to fund that phase one infrastructure by diverting and not using these funds for the playground and for the pickleball court. Because they're gonna come from ARPA funds and from Z E M A N funds, but to think about using the Z E M A N funds for the ball field, because we committed seventy thousand dollars to the ball field. We have ninety thousand in the Z E M A N fund. And use Z E M A N money. Keep that seventy thousand that we've pledged to the ball field in our capital project fund, or capital projects, which could be that infrastructure coming up. Take our ARPA funds, don't spend that on the pickleball court, which was a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, which was originally allocated, but Jared mentioned over like a hundred and thirty-one thousand or a hundred and thirty-two, I'm not really sure, because I was just, I was just sitting on it, listening. Which, by the way, I can hear a lot better out here, so thank you. I mean, I hear a ton better.
Okay.
Thank you. And so, could we discuss the possibility of using that ARPA fund to pay for that infrastructure that we're going to need on phase one?
Can I? There are some details, I think, that the board has hashed through that, that part before. We did talk about that there was a seventy thousand dollars if we wanted to be Z E M A N, and said, no, I don't think so, that, in, and I could be wrong, but my recollection, and just trying to refresh the board, was no, there's just so many donators, contributors and things, and so the Z E M A N would be hard to put a plaque, you know, and said, Z E M A N did this ball field, and say, but it's only a percentage of it, it was the Bartow, whatever, it was like, no, let's try to do like, Z E M A N is the main contributor for the pickleball tennis ball courts, and we can put Z E M A N courts or something on it. So that's what was talked about before. That's what the board, and so I think that's what went away from the Z E M A N funds really being part of the ball field. If you want to change your mind, that's fine, but we just need to refresh a little bit about, you know, what we talked about there, and that's, that's where we were. If we want to change for some reason, and talk about what funds or what, and how you want to make them count it, well, that's fine. Does anybody else recall that? Am I wrong?
Yeah, because I thought we had talked about like, does even the big, being like a big I don't know what the term was, but, but that's a, that's like in and of itself a big.
Fund? Just the sole, the sole sponsorship of something, right, so you could put their name on it.
I, I don't recall that conversation, but maybe that was before I came on the board. I don't know.
No, no. This was on board.
We designated the seventy thousand dollars, we talked specifically, we were talking about, okay, now where's the seventy thousand dollars gonna come from?
Didn't have a comment about that.
What was Z E M A N, ARPA, capital projects, where the fund was gonna come from? And my recollection, I could be wrong, but my recollection was, Tim, that was a conversation we had, that we wanted it to be designated, we wanted Z E M A N.
That doesn't mean that's the decision, right? I'm just giving you, that was the rationale.
Discussion.
Yeah, that was the discussion. Nick, Matt had something? Did you have something, Matt, you?
Just a very short comment, that when we voted for that, it was my intention in the vote that we, we would spend up to seventy thousand dollars, and I understand it's maybe high in the sky for me to hope that we could get away with a little bit less, depending on how much was given by other people.
Well, we're halfway there. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's still up for discussion, because I don't know if any individual's given seventy thousand dollars of in-kind or seventy thousand dollars of cash. Even Shields, they just gave fifty thousand. Z E M A N would be the preponderance of the project. You know, as far as one single donor. I mean, we could talk to Richard and see if his cousin, how his cousin, he would. Um, you know, as far as one single donor, I mean, we could talk to Richard and see if his cousin, how his cousin, he would think his cousin would be able about it, I mean, you know, it's.
Does the donorship amount mean that you have to name it after, right, you don't really have to?
No, let's, so, I mean, and, and I think we could call it the Zeman Ball Field if we wanted, I mean, we can ask Richard, I mean, he knows cousin better than we do, but. But it's something that I would like us to think about, um, and then that way.
Is there, is there, okay, maybe you follow, no, okay, I'll let you finish, maybe, I'll just.
Okay, I just, I wasn't going to say anything about the Zeman, I was done with the Zeman.
Okay. Why, what benefit is there now to that, I mean, if we do that, what does that make?
Then we have sec, we have seventy thousand dollars in capital project funds that we're not tapping into to pay for the ball field, because already, whatever, we're at thirty-four thousand or thirty-six thousand, whatever it was.
So in your mind, then you want to not do the courts then, is that what you're trying to work towards?
Right, not do the courts and fund the infrastructure for phase one at the Racer. Because we're only going to get the, we're only going to get the purchase price of the land, and then we got to come up with the rest, that's not going to cover that infrastructure, it's a much bigger build than what we're going to give the little man, use our money, use the, the seventy thousand from the ball field that we put towards, it would just stay in capital projects, and then, then we would, we would come closer to making that number, I mean, we, I know we don't know the final number for what the infrastructure is, but.
We will, we will make the number, um, so that's not some of the math we did, um, I don't know if you were in the meeting that long.
I wasn't, I had to leave, I had another meeting, so.
We, we did do, um.
We did do that number.
We, we did do a math on that, we took the, um, amount of money, the incentive minus the purchase price, um, and we will, the intent, or as budgeted, um, there will not, or it's not budgeted or it's not anticipated to use barbed money for that project, it would be to fund it completely out of capital projects as the fund sits.
Okay, and that takes our capital project fund down to?
We'll have to redo that math, that, we did not, I did not put together a presentation, we get back to the napkin math, I don't have the back of that napkin, so I'll, you'll forgive me, we'll, we'll have to redo that math.
Yeah, I just, I just want to make sure that.
We can do that, I just, when we get it, we get back, and how can, uh, this.
So you're just, you're just, you just don't want to take out a loan?
I don't want to take out a loan, and I don't want to deplete our capital project fund so much that if we have to do the parking lot over at the, the post office, which is dilapidated and also needs a treatment, whether we do touch asphalt here or whatever, we have to do it. So we have the money, because whatever we just spent on.
What, what, what lifetime were you talking about?
Oh, five, oh, the, the post office, the post office, that one needs, it's, it needs, it needs repair, it's, it's in need of repair, I want us, I want us to take care of our, what we have in our village, and to do a good job of maintaining what we have in our village, have enough money in our capital project fund to be able to do the, to fix the things as they break.
Yeah, I think there's alternatives that you're missing, almost parking lots too, they're not parking lots, they're lots.
They're what?
They're lots.
Yes, they're lots, they're really tiny lots, but we're using them as parking lots, we own the property and it's our responsibility to maintain the park, but right now we're parking.
If you, you don't.
We have to maintain our, our playground equipment and our tennis courts and our basketball courts.
Right, I would rather spend money on those than not have parking lots.
And that's also what we, I mean, we sent out the survey and did all these things and asked people, you know, what can we do with the park, and what do we see in our parks, and so I think to completely forego those things, we need to consider, well, there are parts of it we could do, are there? I mean.
Yeah.
Well, and to be fair, we just asked about the park, we didn't say, you know, would you rather have parking lots repaired, streets repaired, you know, would you rather do these projects in the village and, you know, rank them against the park, we just asked, what did you want for the park, so I mean, so, and to be fair, we didn't compare it with, with anything else.
How are, how are we funding our capital projects, where does that come from?
Um, you get, there's a certain amount on your line, I don't, I don't know if it's, there's a resolution that's forty or fifty thousand dollars every year that gets from general fund, capital fund? No?
No. You put various amounts.
Well, the CER gets some amount of money and.
CER is designated.
Is that the forty here?
Yeah, we're, we are, we are playing, moving money, capital project.
So we're, we're, we're funding, replacing equipment, but capital project funds gets revenues over expenditure, so if you get to the end of the year and you budgeted, but your expenses were fifty thousand dollars less, then that fifty thousand dollars goes to capital fund.
And then we have the internal loan, that's also putting the, um, money back in there.
That's going right into the, uh, the six hundred fifteen thousand internal.
And, and essentially what, what the state has.
Yeah, I won't get there, but county's doing it.
Eventually you get to the point where you, you break with your legume, and that's where they use capital, you don't have a capital fund anymore. It's, it's nothing, right, that's where you have, that you start taking loans, that's what.
That's what we talked about.
Right, so you're.
How about we break, I'm not sure what you mean.
You can't, you only increase a percent every year, and cost of living goes up six or eight percent, how many years do you think is that's going to last before that breaks down?
Oh, I see, before you expend all your capital project money, I see.
Well, you don't, you can't save any money, because your expenses, your op, your operating costs so much.
Your operating expenses are higher than what your, your income is.
So eventually, if some, if the state doesn't change, you can't keep trying to say, wow, you, we're doing, that's what we're doing really well, I mean, if we have a capital fund of two hundred, three hundred thousand dollars. We're doing pretty good, um, but eventually, if things change, that's probably going to be one on zero, so that's why you see not being funded, um, and eventually there's going to be another street project or something else that'll come along, and you're going to have to decide how much that you do use on a, on the block top or the road or the base course, whatever it takes to that, maybe it heats all that up. But if things don't change with the state, and we're stuck with a one percent levy limit increase every year.
Right.
It's when you take debt, and then they, then there's a certain amount of debt levy that you can increase up to, I don't remember what it was, but we don't want to do that, right, but.
Right, because that is.
The financials break down eventually, where you're, you're stuck.
Okay.
So, anyway, I, I was just asking specific questions, I'm like, what's, what's the alternative, if we're going to make, if we're deciding to put Zeman money here, there's often, what's, we're making, trying to make a decision somewhere else, and so what, what? So as far as, are you wanting to do something on this budget then with the three hundred thousand dollars right now? Is that what you're asking for?
I want to discuss it, I want to see how the rest of you talk about, you know, about that project, and, and this is, I didn't realize until Jared just said, and I want to, I want to be very clear, and so I'm going to make sure I ask my question, and then I'm getting the answer. You're saying, Jared, that there is enough money in the capital project fund to, to pay for, without taking out debt, I don't want to take out debt, I'm trying to avoid debt like a play, that's what I'm trying to do. And no one has to take out debt to pay for phase one infrastructure over at the Racer.
Correct.
Well, let me qualify.
Okay.
I, I, I want to be careful in how I say this, not to answer a question I haven't researched.
Okay.
So, let me qualify that, um, currently in capital, in undesignated capital, meaning we haven't, it's not ARPA money and it's not Zeman, but, but in undesignated capital projects fund, we have three hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. Okay?
Okay.
I've got ninety-one thousand five hundred in Zeman money, and we've got.
In what money?
Zeman, the clean money, Zeman money.
Oh, Zeman, how much?
Ninety-one thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and seventeen cents.
Ninety-one thousand in Zeman, because it's accrued interest, okay?
Yep, and just shy, two dollars shy of a hundred and thirty-five, it's a hundred and thirty-four, nine, fifty-six, sixty-five.
A hundred and thirty-five thousand in ARPA.
In ARPA money, okay?
So take seventy thousand dollars off of the three eighty-six.
Yep, we start, we start out by ten, so the, this.
Okay, so your opinion, go ahead.
This is the back of the napkin map, back of the napkin map that we did.
So we're taking seventy thousand for the ball.
Yep, because we.
Three eighty-six, now we're down to three sixteen, minus seventy K, so we're at three sixteen.
I need to back up, I am not using today's common cash balance, that might be off slightly on the capital project fund.
How much is slightly?
I don't know, I'm not using today's balance.
Oh, okay.
I, I, I'm just looking, I, I'm just looking at the date, um, if.
Is it kind of like your 401K that lost, like, a bunch of money?
No, but if we've made a, um, we might be, we might be ten thousand dollars off.
Oh.
Payment bill.
If we made ten thousand dollars, you know, for, I, I do not have today's cash balance.
Okay.
Don't quote me on that number, because that isn't today's number, I mean, that's, we're, we're going back to the napkin.
You're not, you're not.
Yeah, we're doing.
I mean, we're not ten thousand dollars off.
We might be ten thousand dollars off.
But you're not a hundred thousand.
We're not a hundred thousand dollars off, we might be ten thousand, but we might be, we're not a hundred, I just, I don't have today's number, I apologize, that's, I didn't pull, I don't apologize, I didn't pull it.
No, you didn't, I was going to ask.
Yes, I, I didn't pull it, so I do not have that, but I, I just want to start out, three eighty-six by zero one, minus the seventy thousand dollars that we calculated, that puts three hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Five one in there, now, if you take, um, an estimated infrastructure cost in phase one of a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars.
Hundred and sixty-five thousand, I thought it was going to be two hundred.
An estimated difference in infrastructure cost.
Purchase, purchase minus.
Oh, after you take out the, the purchase, okay, we're not saying what it is, okay.
Unest, unestimate, unestimated of one sixty-five.
One sixty-five K, okay.
Puts this at a hundred and fifty-one five in there. Now, we're also going, and this is where, where I'm going to say that this number is going to decrease, because we've got fifty thousand dollars-ish in road service work, not, not all that road work we just wrote a check for.
Has appeared yet.
Has appeared on the balance sheet, and part of it's going to tick, so that won't hit capital projects, the rig yard won't hit it, but we're going to take another fifty thousand dollars off.
Say another fifty thousand dollars for.
When this is where I say that ten thousand, it might be ten, it might be fifty, that's the number I was thinking of in the back, I believe, there's an additional hundred thousand dollars sitting in that account. A hundred and fifty-one, take fifty for road, that'd be some hundred thousand dollars sitting in that account.
A hundred thousand dollars in which account?
Capital fund, sorry, capital fund.
Okay, I had us at three hundred and sixteen after we subtracted the seventy K.
And then we did a hundred and sixty off that whatever.
A hundred and sixty-five for phase one, okay, that's what we're doing.
And then another, and then an additional fifty for, uh, funds expended, but not necessarily reflected on the sheet.
Okay, sixteen.
And those are.
So, and so then you get, then you get.
Total minus ten K.
And that gives us a hundred and one.
Yep.
And then we figure forty-five thousand dollars in debt service comes in.
Forty-five thousand dollars in debt service, we.
Next year, we're going to have that internal payment.
You, you'll have the internal payment.
Okay, the internal payment that we're paying ourselves for Racer, okay, and that's how much? Forty?
No, we pull up, I'll, I can give you that.
Twenty-three plus twenty-one, forty-four, something like that, maybe forty-five.
Just run down to forty.
Say forty. You'll get.
I think it's forty-four.
Twenty-one, twenty-three, you're right, it's, uh, forty-four, forty-four, two, forty-four, three.
Plus forty-four, so now we're at a hundred and fifty, okay?
And then you'll get revenue over expenditure at the end of the year.
As of right now, we are anticipating revenue, revenue over expenditure.
Okay, a big thousand.
We will not, uh, I will not, I will not venture a guess, I have not researched the topic, I will not venture a guess.
Well, many times look at averages, aren't we?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's went from ninety down to twenty, so I've seen ninety thousand, fifty thousand, and I've seen twenty thousand, to read, right, or usually write on thirty or forty.
I'll put approximately thirty K.
Okay.
So, plus forty-four.
It's not a quote, that's just generally the trend, right?
So we'll get a hundred and seventy-five thousand.
Spitball.
Spitball, I understand, a hundred and seventy-five thousand in capital project.
After explaining.
After we pay for, okay, not touching Zeman, not touching ARPA.
And that's where Zeman and ARPA could go the other direction.
And this was the conversation we had, I mean, obviously you weren't around for us, it's not, but we had this conversation in finance committee, um, when we talked about this last week, trying to make sure that we were covered for those numbers we were projecting, and that we were not coming down to, coming down to nothing.
And, and I will say, even, even if you budget, I don't know what the numbers are, three hundred thousand dollars, doesn't mean you have to spend money, I mean, it's the best, you don't have to go back and write that. I don't know if that's a good way to look at it, but, I mean, it's, you can change your mind, if you, it's good, it's good to kind of talk about the numbers, because you don't talk about the fund balances a whole lot, but even if you put on the budget now, you can still keep talking about the numbers, keep, uh, a measure on the fund balance, and then decide based on if things change, we don't, we don't want to do those things.
Well, based on all of that spitballing, we would have enough to do phase one, and do pickleball courts, and do the playground equipment, and we'll have a hundred and one thousand dollars left over.
Yes.
Spitball, a hundred and one thousand left over in the capital project fund.
Not quite, you got to keep the fifty thousand dollars that we just said we were expending in that current budget.
Uh, I put in, I, I did subtract, I thought I subtracted that out.
Okay, if you've got that in there.
I, I, I did write that down, so, but I mean, okay, we, we're close to minus fifty thousand dollars, but I mean.
Yeah, we're, we're spitballing in this.
What we're saying is that we are not going completely to be, we're not going into debt, I just want to make really clear, I do not want this village to go one dollar more into debt, and I know, I heard what you said, Tim, I, I know, we're looking at a future, and hopefully the state will come true for us, I don't know, we'll see, we don't know what will happen, who knows, a tornado will come, blow this building down tomorrow, then we'll be in big trouble, we'll have insurance.
Well, at least we haven't been doing it for ten years, like, other places, so.
I mean, the, tap in debt, their capital and debt levy.
And raising taxes to two thousand.
Yeah. We're, we're behind the trend, I don't know what you're right.
I like being last, when it comes to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Those are the kind of days we'll be last all day long.
Is there anything else on?
So I'm not making a proposed change.
Is there anything else on the budget, so this need be looking for motion to take the proposed budget to preliminary hearing?
If you would make a similar motion, that if there's any changes between now and then, because if we need to change two hundred dollar share there, that.
Oh, yeah, with some capacity for minor adjustments.
I think, honestly, I think I have pretty good numbers, um, I've got all the, all the question marks that we have floating out, um, I think are included, we had, I knew in last meeting that there was some question, but.
Okay, so fine, just make a motion with, we will, you know.
I make a motion to go forward with the.
Motion is, accept it and take it with all the question marks.
You mean second?
And, did you, did you by chance mean that in that motion that you were setting the date and time of that hearing?
I am sorry.
Am I setting the date and time of that hearing?
Yeah, we need a November fourteenth, that's our regular board meeting that we'll have a public hearing, and say seven o'clock.
Date and time of that hearing is seven o'clock?
You can set whatever time you want, we just meet at six, that gives us time.
You go ahead, you go ahead.
No, you can have the motion.
Or did he get second?
He was behind.
Now I'm confused.
Hypothetically, the motion would look something like to make the.
I make the motion that we are going to approve the budget.
Proposed budget.
Proposed budget, and set the hearing for November fourteenth at seven P M. And with the wiggle room of a couple of hundred bucks, if things change.
Don't qualify the number.
Okay, with some wiggle room if numbers change. Okay, Matt, you're up.
Second.
Okay, motion is second.
Is that, I'm sorry, is we?
Is that a regular meeting?
Yeah, so.
Any other comments or questions on that? Board has the motion, comments, questions, okay, I'm going to do a roll call, because it's he, Cots.
Yes.
Mattoon?
Yes.
Raff, yes, Haylesworth?
Yes.
Goodman?
Yes.
Hervison?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, and we are adjourned.
Thank you. Thank you.
Bye, Matt. Bye, Matt.
You just keep looking at it.
I just like to, I like to look at spreadsheets.